So, we are going to start with questions. I would really appreciate it if you could, if you have a question. I know it's a little bit difficult, but if you could come up, because we are recording. So, we want to have all the questions and responses that we're going to give to your questions, so that people who watch this later will have the benefit of really knowing what the questions were. So, if you don't mind coming up, please.
They need you to be close to the microphone.
Yeah, it's gotta be close to the microphone, or it won't pick up.
Or you can repeat what someone's asking.
Okay. Okay. Or I can just walk over here, and I'll hand it to you, and then I'll respond.
State your name, please, and your address.
My name is Lynn Dunlop, and I live at 217 Palisades Drive. My first brief question is, is this what they consider a Mellow Roos Assessment?
No.
No?
No.
Okay. Secondarily, where do the fines that people pay for parking tickets or street sweeping assessments go? So, the fines that people pay for street sweeping go into the general fund, and they go, not just street sweeping, but all parking violations. It all goes into the general fund, and those general fund dollars help to pay for the services that are being provided. So, it helps to pay for street sweeping. It helps to pay for police law, you know, parking enforcement. So, that's where those dollars go. It pays for the operations that we're funding.
I don't need the microphone. You know, I've been arrested in a-
Can you, first of all, name first and address.
Barrios Cordon, and I live at 321 Lake Shire Drive. And my, you know, one of my questions is, you know, I've been, well, I've been arrested in the same house for, since 1967, and this is the worst I've seen in Daly City, about a year and a half. And the city of Daly City, you know, I used to call, you know, every time the lights go out, and leave messages, and they didn't even return my calls. The only person that really helped me was Mr. Funesi. That's the only one who called me back and explained to me, you know, but it's been really bad. But my question is, how much PG&E is gonna put out all this? Because that's their equipment, you know, that's their problem, too. They're gonna put in everyone would do it, no matter what we're gonna pay. And the other thing is, you know, it's a lot of waste of money in Daly City. My street doesn't need to be swept twice, I mean, every week. Twice a month would be more than enough. And, you know, so it's a lot of waste of money that we can use for the rest. Thank you.
Okay. Scott, come on up. This is Scott Hart, the Government Relations Officer for PG&E, and he's our representative. So, Scott.
Sure, certainly. Thank you, and thank you for the question. PG&E has committed to work with the city. When they replace their equipment, we will replace the equipment on our side. So, that equipment will be taken care of at the same time. As far as, and we are replacing, and in fact, those of you that are on 460, everything on our side of that equipment has been replaced multiple times, and we're keeping our fingers crossed that for now it is working, and it will continue to do so. And so, we are replacing, you know, we are replacing the photo eyes, the Kyle switches, the transformers. Right now, we're out of transformers. There's only one company in the whole country that makes these transformers, and we have back orders for replacement transformers. We used up all of our replacement ones that we had on hand in addressing this most recent wave of issues. And so, if I may, just a little bit broader context for this issue. This is a very unique situation to just San Mateo County and to Daly City. We only have 50 RO circuits in our whole system, and they're in San Mateo County. They do not exist elsewhere. We're in the process of removing the last few that are in the city of San Francisco. And this was, it's an antiquated technology, but it's a technology that was, at its time, state-of-the-art, and it was built to last. And for the most part, they lasted a long time. These are very robust, strong transformers that last a long time, were not problematic. What we're experiencing is atmospheric issues, as well as a combination of the fact that we don't have any separation between our side of the equipment and the city's side for a long time. That's something that's been recently rectified. So, then we can separate the two, so that if an issue happens on either side, it doesn't impact the other. For a long time, at least, you know, until recently, when this new solution was found, any issue on either side in the whole system went out. And so, if an issue happened, as Mr. Fuller mentioned before, when the, there was an issue with the wiring, that would also sometimes burn out our equipment. And so, all the equipment, yes, our equipment is the part that generates, and so, all of the equipment failures that happen, happen on our side, but sometimes they are caused by both sides of the system. And so, and we own that, and we've replaced it, and we continue to commit to replace. And as soon as we get a new transformer in, those on 366, who's, which is currently out, we'll get that new transformer. And so-
How long?
Right now?
How long?
How long? We're wait, that's the thing, we're waiting to hear from the manufacturer. It's gonna be at least a couple of weeks. It's been in, we could be ordering two and a half months ago. And so, unfortunately, with only one company in the whole country, and in LA, there's a, there are a lot of these circuits still. They don't have the weather issues that we do up here. And so, we're competing, and this is, this was a very common transformer in his, in the past. So, we're also dealing with demand all throughout the country. Sure?
Yes. Can I go to someone else? Just a second. Back there.
Names and addresses.
Yeah, Greg Smithers, 265 Skyline Drive. Question. Has PG&E considered working with the city financially regarding the reduction in these ROs? Because I know that those ROs are worth about $25,000. And then, on top of that, you got the crews that gotta go out there and work the system to get them back together. You're talking a lot of money there, and especially if they're going out time after time.
Excellent question, and you're right. As frustrating as it is for all of you, which I can't even imagine understanding, because I haven't had to walk outside my house in the evening and not have streetlights, it's equally frustrating for us and expensive. The issue is, as a regulated utility, we cannot engage in a one, unilateral financial agreement with an individual city to address infrastructure problems or finance it on their side. We will replace our side of the equipment as soon as Daly City is able to replace their side of the equipment. We've, you know, committed to do that. We'll make sure that we coordinate and do everything to have our equipment ready to go. But we cannot unilaterally with one city say, "We'll help you finance this." It's, we're not allowed to as a regulated utility, because that would be seen as showing preferential treatment to one city over another.
You know, I think you stated that we have about 50 ROs in the system still.
Yes, sir.
Address it as an RO issue, and that way you can address all of the other cities, too.
I think the issue is, though, that Scott mentioned, it's not, there's 50 here in San Mateo County. There are a lot of them down in Southern California, which he just said.
This is our service jurisdiction.
So, which is, it's outside of their service jurisdiction, but the point is, is that these things are, you know, in, they're still existing, not just in PG&E's jurisdiction, but in Southern California, Edison and others. So, it, they, they're a viable system. Why they're not viable here, we've tried to outline for you. We, we had a meeting with PG&E at the CPUC to talk about these issues. They understand, this is a state regulator. We had a meeting with them to talk about the frustration and the issues that we've had with PG&E in, in terms of the long-time replacement, you know, periods each time something happens. And the CPUC understands it. John, I don't know if you wanna talk about anything they said and what the expectation was.
The bottom line is that the California Public Utility Commission can't control Daly City, because they're not regulars. They regulate public utilities like PG&E. Essentially, what I got out of the meeting was, is that they expected PG&E to try to take more, what do you call it? To look at streetlight failures as a higher-level type of failure. Like, if your house goes out, or a business goes out, those are called Level 1 circuit failures. They're supposed to respond ASAP. Because streetlights are normally not considered a high level, because they're big old wanted at a time, response times are not the same. They don't call ASAP them as a Level 1. And I think what the CPUC said, "Well, for ROs, they're Class 1. You need to respond more aggressively than you have been." And I believe that, that PG&E is gonna try to do that in the future. But that doesn't resolve the fact that these systems are getting old, and we are gonna be facing problems, even if we respond faster. I mean, if you can imagine if, if the one manufacturer who still manufactures RO transformers stopped manufacturing them because it wasn't enough profit in it, we're out of business. We don't have the equipment anymore that'll actually run this system. So, there, most agencies that I'm aware of are trying to get rid of these RO circuits over time. City of Milwaukee, for example, because most of that city developed when ROs were the thing, they have $30 million worth RO circuits at least, and they're spending $2 or $3 million a year to try to get rid of them. But for that city, even though they're spending a couple million dollars a year, there's, it's still gonna take them decades to get rid of them all. But they're trying to get rid of them, too.
We'll get everybody's questions, I promise.
Good evening. My name is Janice Daniels, and I live at 1260 South Gate. I was wondering, with all of the difficulty in getting this product, what are some alternative sources of energy that might be provided for lighting? Solar energy, is that what we need to start looking at? But what, what are other cities doing that have this issue with city lights being out? I'm just curious to know. I'm sure other cities have this issue, this problem. Thank you.
In this county, the city of South San Francisco had ROs. They've actually, because they have more money, if you looked at that one slide, if you calculate out how much money they get, they're taxed, they get as much money from property taxes as the city of Daly City, and they have half our population, because they have a higher tax base than we do. They have a lot more commercial properties, a lot more commercial property tax base, and they were able to afford to convert all their circuits. South San Francisco doesn't have any more ROs. They got rid of them all. San Bruno is investigating ways that they can try to get rid of the one or two that they still have. The city of San Mateo was lucky enough to get one of only, I think, three California Energy Commission grants that was really a energy conservation grant, but they wrapped their RO circuit elimination into that. They got a $3 million grant, not just for that, but for a whole bunch of other stuff. And we looked into that after we found out that San Mateo was lucky enough to do that. And that program still exists, but the waiting list to get it shot at that grant money again is long. And then, cities like Milwaukee, they're just ponying up the money and trying to get rid of them. As far as other energy sources, it's really not an energy source problem in terms of the actual energy and the, you know, the wire. It's getting the electricity into the wire that's the issue. You could go out in this neighborhood, for example, and replace every street light with a, with a individual standalone solar light, but again, that would cost a lot of money as an alternative, and then completely drop PG&E.
Hi, my name is Grant Gordon. I live at 265 Highgate. I'm in RO 406. And I have a fourth solution that I'd like to, to throw out there. So, my solution is using the sharing economy to fundraise. I think we can, if not pay for this totally, we can offset some of it. Crowdsourcing is one option, but I'm a Lyft driver. And, you know, the sharing economy, for instance, 80 to 100% of the fare stays with, stays in the local economy. They also, you know, with promo codes, we can, we can raise money. I've already created a promo code for Daly City Lights, and I think as a community, we could promote that, and I'll just donate what we make from that to this project. So, using social media, using, we could, I think, garner support from the rest of Daly City by using that. And so, I'd like to submit a proposal or talk to you further about this, because I think, I think it could work.
I think it's a terrific idea. We certainly can talk to you about it, and if we can get it going, I think it's a great idea.
Is that similar to, like, when you make a purchase at Target, and you can have a portion of your purchases go to a school of your choice? Something similar to that?
Similar.
Similar, but a lot more of it will go, well, in this case, 100% of it would go to the project. So, you know, I think traditional businesses do create jobs in our community, but I think they're taking a lot more money out than they're putting in, and I think the sharing economy is much different in that more of the funds stay local and less go elsewhere. So, it's, it's a win-win for everybody.
I think it's a great idea. We definitely will, we'll be talking about this one, for sure. So, we, we have your name and address. We'll be following up with you.
Okay.
Hi, Phil Obers, 34 Carmel Avenue, I'm in Section 460. And initially, I was gonna say, I received a letter in the mail here about a week ago about this slurry being done, and I was gonna say, "Hey, why can't we cancel that for one year?" But I see from your talk that that's designated fund, so we can't. But when you mentioned about the newest system going to LEDs and such, you're not, you didn't really say how that, what kind of equipment, are we still gonna have some kind of a transformer out on the, on the power poles and with the, with all the other equipment? Or is it gonna be something totally brand-new that is, that's gonna hopefully stay around in the, in the field for a few decades?
The, the replacement system would be essentially brand-new. We would try to utilize poles, pole bases, pole boxes where we could, just to keep the cost down, because that kind of infrastructure really is relatively resilient, and it's the same whether you build it today or you build it tomorrow. But yes, there would be like a new transformer, but it'd be a different kind of a transformer. It's the kind of transformer that represents about 99.999% of the transformers in PG&E's system. It's a dumb transformer. It's just a lump of coil wire. It's not like an RO transformer that has moving parts in it. So, it's a technology that's been around forever, and it's gonna be used on your house today, it's probably gonna be used on your house 40 years from now. It's the same kind of a power source that gets electricity to your house. So, yes, what it gets replaced with would be something that is going to be around forever, probably, because it powers pretty much the entire PG&E secondary system.
But they'd also put it into the parallel that the rest of the city is?
Yes. Yeah, that's what we would do, is we, these are called series circuits, where all the lights are on one single wire that runs all over the place, but it's only one wire. In a parallel streetlight system, there's two wires that run to every light, and that's the difference. That's why we would have to rewire the whole system in order to convert it to a, to a parallel system.
So, if any of you have heard in the past, John described the RO system, he's, you know, it being like Christmas tree lights. So, if one goes out, they all go out. And so, trying to identify which one has gone out in order to be able to assess whether it is, in fact, an electrical system on the city's part versus a power issue can also take a lot of time, because of the way that the circuitry on those systems is installed. So, that would change with a parallel system.
My name is Guy Maston. I'm from 15 Monterey Drive. This topic about lights being out has been going on for the last 10 years. I remember having the same meeting, there was a meeting at Our Lady of Mercy Parish Hall 10 years ago, and I would like to know, I brought up the same topic over there when it was done by the police captain, Captain Corey, and the same, very same topic came up there, saying that streetlights are off, how can we ever report a crime to the police department? I had two, two city council members sitting right there, and one city manager sitting there, who both approached me and told me, "If this ever happens again, let us know." But why did it take you so long to bring this meeting up to talk about the city lights, about our lights? And then, number two, why should the city, why should the taxpayer be paying for it? I find that, first of all, all the city workers need to take a cut in pay, the city council members to take a cut in pay and put this money towards fixing our lights on the street, because this has been going on for more than 10 years, and we need to have some solution. We need to be the CEOs of this city, not the city council members, not anybody who's working for the city. We, the people, need to be the CEOs. We need to decide when each, each of our city council members and the city workers get a pay and raise. We need to take that money and put it towards getting our lights done. So, I put this question back to you all as to, why is it taking so long for you all to have this meeting and to fix these lights, when it was 10 years ago that I already mentioned about it?
Well, thank you. I, I was at that meeting, so I know. And as I said, it's been more than 10 years. It's actually been 16 years that I'm aware of, and I think for some of you who've lived here a lot longer, you're, you're probably aware, although back then, you probably haven't had the outages like we have today. This didn't just happen the last 10 years. The particular area where you live, that was when it first started. Some of these other areas had had it before, and there were other areas, because we have replaced one. And so, this has been an ongoing issue, but not to the severity that it is today. And that's why we're having this meeting. We had a meeting at Our Lady Mercy Church, at the community room, to talk about it, because people were afraid of crime issues. It was not a streetlight issue, meeting, it was about crime. And one of the issues that we talked about was the perception that if the streetlights are out, that that can contribute to crime. And it's, it's an issue now. I mean, we've heard that from people who've responded back to us. It is a very real issue. I think that we have not seen any real serious increase in any kind of crime as a result, thank goodness. But it is the perception, and the perception can be as bad as the reality. So, even if people's perception is, of being unsafe is, exists, then that can be as bad as the reality, that it really is causing additional crime. And I agree with that. It is a question of cost, and I explained earlier where your tax dollars are going. And your tax dollars are going to provide every single service that you're getting in the city. And with respect to the comment that you made about public employees, the city employees in Daly City have not had a raise since 2008, when we cut our salaries voluntarily because of the recession. And in order not to have to cut services to the public, we cut our own salaries. We have not had a raise since. So, the perception that we're getting big raises all the time, not true. Not true. We all have the same kind of expenses as all of you. We have mortgage payments, we have all those things, and we haven't had a raise since 2008, when we cut our salaries. So, I appreciate the concern, and I appreciate some of the comments that are made, that, you know, we could cut street sweeping and we could save a lot of money. It would not save the amount of money we need in order to replace these lights. And we are mandated by law to do street sweeping, because it keeps-
Every week?
Yes, every week. Every week. We are mandated by state law, because it keeps trash and other particulate matter out of the storm drain system, so that it doesn't pollute our oceans. We are legally required.
Daly City, they only sweep twice a month.
San Francisco has a lot of other-
We are under the, the, basically, we're, we're, all cities in the Bay Area have to respond to the Regional Acrylic Contour Board's regional permit for stormwater discharges. Their guiding principle is, you can't do less than what you're doing now, and we want you to do more. So, a city like ours, that has been doing weekly street sweeping for a long time, cannot reduce our level of service without risking being fined. And I mean big fines, like $10,000 a day.
And affecting the environment.
The Regional Acrylic Contour Board doesn't consider it a waste. That's the problem. You wanna go talk to them, you can go talk to them. But they're the ones who can fine us.
Okay. You've been waiting patiently.
Hi. My name's Lauren Appenarney, and I live in 53 Glenbrook, and I'm in Section, or RO 406. And I have two questions. The first one that concerned me is that the next transformer is gonna go to 360. So, how long for 406, before that's repaired? We are a short block. Sadly, economic downturn, we've lost two houses to foreclosure, and we have had an increase in crime. We have had squatters who have moved into those houses without anyone knowing, because they're able to come over the back fences, they're able to come in at night, and no one has seen them. My second question is, if we go with this assessment district, and you say it's two years, and this is a weather sort of thing that's causing this to happen, if we're to believe what people are now saying, that we're gonna be coming up into an El Nino year, are we looking at everything going out again?
Both very good questions on the replacement. John, you wanna speak to that?
RO 366 is getting the next new transformer, because right now, they have no transformer. There's, the pole has no transformer on it, and they have no lights. So, they get the next one that's coming down the line. PG&E told us in a meeting just last Friday that they are going to be ordering four transformers, new ones, to keep on hand, 220 megawatts and 230 kilowatts, because of the two sizes that, that depend on the size of the circuit, so that they will have more brand-new transformers on hand. And they're a hell of a lot more expensive than $25,000. The little ones are about 40 grand, and the big ones are about 60. So, PG&E is basically spending about $200,000 to preorder some additional brand-new transformers. When those transformers will get here, I don't know. I don't think PG&E even knows, because you have to get in line and wait, because there's only one factory making them. But once 366 gets its transformer in place, everybody will be up and running, hopefully, fingers crossed, knock on wood, if nothing else fails, until the next failure happens. I don't think that PG&E will actually take a old transformer out of service and use one of the new ones until something actually fails.
And with respect to the question about the potential for El Nino storms this winter, it is a concern. But even in the best-case scenario, even if we had the ability right now to write a check to install new streetlights, we wouldn't have it done by then. So, you know, we're gonna have to continue to do what we're doing to keep the system up and running, and hopefully PG&E will be able to create some sort of inventory to make sure that they have transformers available in the event that, you know, with some of those anticipated storms, that we have more outages. Okay, let me get back here, because they haven't had a chance, and then we'll go back to the repeat questions, okay?
Yes, I have two questions. I'm Sharon Keenan from 207 Lake Shire Drive. And we've heard what you wanna do and that, but we haven't heard how many of these RO units are in the area that's blocked out, how many telephone poles are in the area, what the cost is. We need to see some kind of financial, because some of us, in fact, most of us in that area are senior citizens, and that we can't afford a big hit, because we're already on Prop 13, because I've been here since- because I've been here since they built it. And secondly, why can't we apply for a bond with an oversight committee, so everybody thinks it's on the up and up, and pay that back?
So, both good questions. One, as I mentioned before, when I talked about how an assessment district could be formed, we would have to, if the council directed us that that seemed to be something that they would be willing to put before the voters, then we would have to do an engineer's report. So, we would then collect all the data, we would count every single pole, we would know exactly how many in each section of each RO, we'd know the cost for each and every one of those poles, all the details. Right now, we haven't done that, because it would expend a lot of time and effort, and we don't even know if an assessment district is something that's gonna fly, so we haven't spent the time. But once the decision is made for us to go forward, if it's made, then we would provide that, and we would have a public hearing, and you would be invited here, and every detail would be spelled out. Every cost, how much it would be per parcel, and then how long the assessment district would run, and what you would pay each year, everything would be spelled out in black and white. Every single detail, it would be fully transparent, so you would know exactly. Now, the, the difference between that and bonding for it is, obviously, the interest rates with a bond end up paying more over a longer period of time to pay for it. With the assessment district, it actually, all, everything is built into the cost, and so we are, you know, we have an assurance that the revenue's gonna come in to pay it off over time. So, it ends up being more cost-effective to do it that way than to issue bonds. And particularly because with bonds, like for example, the school districts, okay, when they do that, but it goes across everyone in the whole city. The assessment district for this particular issue would not be, so the cost is, seems a lot less, because it's spread across everybody, all the voters in the city, when you do a bond.
Owen Daniels, 1260 South Gate. Question for, for PG&E. You mentioned that Southern California, Southern California, it has a lot of these transformers. Can we get a couple of theirs?
Sorry. In Southern California, sorry, they, actually, it's, it's their railroad in district that uses them. But as far as getting spares... What I'll do is, I'll check on that. I can't imagine that we didn't, cause I'll be honest, this is something where, and we look far and wide, and it's not, you know, we don't like leaving a transformer not sitting on a pole. Number one, it's not generating energy, so it's not generating a bill. So, but not that we make money off of energy, but if nothing else, just know, because we don't.
They want the city to pay the bill.
But anyway, it's, it's one of those things where, I mean, we really, I mean, it's not, we don't, you know, my superintendent, who has met with Mr. Fuller multiple times, something that we've run all the way up through our chain, all the way up to our senior VP that oversees all of electric operations, and it's something that we're trying to do what we can. And we ordered two, so we're hoping the two will come in quickly, and then we order, as, as Mr. Fuller mentioned, ordered four more. So, and just, you know, a little bit of explanation is, in this, I came, actually, my third week on the job, I met Mr. Fuller, and in that meeting, he mentioned, you know, knock on wood, with my colleague that came and met with, that, you know, the ROs have been doing okay, and that was three years ago, and they've been okay for about a year. So now, you can imagine what happens is, is we've had these ROs sitting on a shelf. We have them sitting there waiting, and so, that means there's potential for them to, you know, over time, so you're not gonna keep a whole bunch of them. So we, you know, that's why when these, this recent rash came through, we burned through our supply of reserves. As soon as we knew we were gonna burn through, we put in the order, but, you know, like I said, a couple of months ago. And so, you know, that's, it's, and when you don't know, because we can't forecast when this issue was gonna come, because, once again, you know, we had about four years where it hadn't become this large of an issue. Now granted, when a single light goes out, and your whole string goes out, that obviously, you know, keeps, it reminds you every time that you're on an RO circuit, in that sense, so. But, you know, once again, I'll find out for you if we did reach out, I can't imagine that we didn't. And, and also, I'll find out if I can get a better scope on the timeline on the next round of ROs that are coming, so that you'll know. We have invested quite a bit to be able to have that stock, and the best thing that can happen is, is that they sit on the shelf and rust for the next four years again. But, once again, we, we have made that commitment.
And we'll make sure that when Scott gets back to us in a timely way, like he said he will, that we will send that information out to you through social media, or on our website and other means, so that you'll know the answer. And as we get reports back about when they're arriving, we'll put that out to you, so you know, as well as, as the city.